Alderman Winn.
We have a quorum. First, on the agenda, city manager, do you have any announcements you wanted to make?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'd like to make two introductions, if I may. We have two new employees with us this evening. First is Grant Farrar, our new city attorney corporation counsel attending his first council meeting. Grant comes to us from the private sector, working in private sector law firms representing cities, villages, and counties in Illinois. We welcome him. And also would like to introduce Lehman Walker. Lehman is our new director of community development. This is Lehman's first day. He comes to us, and this is early, Lehman, so just so you know. Lehman comes to us from the city of University City, Missouri, just outside of St. Louis, outside of Washington University in St. Louis, and was their director of community development for a number of years. So we're very pleased to have both Grant and Lehman join our executive team.
Thank you. City clerk, did you have any announcements? Excellent. The first item on the agenda is public comments. I'm going to call three names, since we only have three signed up, and if you would all go up and be ready to speak in the following order: Mike Vasilko, Jeff Smith, and Donna Gerson. And would you each give us your address?
My name is Mike Vasilko. I live at 2728 Reese Avenue in Evanston. I'm speaking on one of the recommendations listed that Lynn will go over later for a long-term, hopefully budget assistance in the form of a proposed lakefront fine arts and performing arts district. This district is a long-term budget recommendation, not a short-term budget recommendation. We know that it would take years to complete such a task. But the goals are pretty simple. The primary goal of this proposal is to create a revenue-producing, Evanston-owned district on the lakefront to offset the growing need for property tax increases. A companion goal is to expand Evanston's cultural heritage and promote Evanston as a point of destination for visitors interested in the finest of performing arts facilities. For all of Evanston's charm, wonderful restaurants and retail, and other welcoming aspects of the community, Evanston is not a destination that distant visitors choose. We may attract local visitors, but we don't have enough of the travelers who come from other cities or other states. Evanston needs a lure to attract visitors from across the nation. Evanston needs an attraction, a reason for people to go out of their way to schedule a weekend trip or vacation in Evanston with Evanston as their chosen destination. The proposed district is not intended to be a substitute or to eliminate any existing downtown restaurants, hotels, retail, or theaters. Rather, the goal is to study the new district's permitted uses and size, and size them accordingly to complement existing Evanston facilities. The desire is that once a visitor arrives in Evanston, they'll need and desire to explore the downtown and everything else Evanston has to offer. The revenue-producing permitted uses we were suggesting include performing arts theaters, performing arts opera concert halls, performing arts orchestra concert hall, black box theaters, other entertainment clubs, OmniMax Theater possibly, meetings and conventions, something of a mini McCormick Place, but one where there's not so much corruption possibly. A variety of room sizes that could accommodate up to 3,500 people or more in one venue. This would exceed what Northwestern has to offer in the way of seating capacity. Festival grounds, Evanston's version of a Ravinia, marine life habitat that could be incorporated into the proposal, something of a boutique hotel possibly, restaurants below great parking, a marina was suggested as part of the comments from the community. So a marina boat harbor and possibly storage for marina for boats. Ground transportation would be increased, I think, between downtown and this proposed district. I've circulated in the attachments that were left on your desk in front of you, a sketch that others have seen, which suggests that this could be at the end of Church Street and make the loop back downtown for public transportation by way of Davis Street. Ownership is clearly that of Evanston. Evanston may choose to partner with someone else like Womet or possibly even Northwestern would be interested in considering some amenities that they could contribute towards. As far as who this development would benefit, the intended benefit again is for-
Mike, you have one more minute.
Tax, I'm skipping ahead.
Okay, sorry, I know you did a lot of work on-
Tax relief for Evanston owners. It would certainly benefit local retail hospitality restaurants and other businesses already in Evanston. The general fund would benefit. A series of Evanston's fine art and cultural organizations would benefit. There would be additional demands on public parking facilities already in existence. Forestery department would gain more ground. They would not have to fire people, but they could actually hire people. Community development department would need to hire people and not lay them off. And this would be a 365-day facility rather than a three-month use of the existing beaches on the lakefront. All we're asking for, all I'm asking for, is that it be given some consideration and that we're allowed to research this further and hopefully prove it out to be a feasible idea. I'm also going to circulate-
Thank you very much.
The impact it may have on the existing master plan for the lakefront, which is really just a path that we need for traffic to get around the existing lagoon.
Thank you very much. Alderman Winn and Alderman Rainey, next.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to have a point of clarification that at the November 12th meeting of the city council, that we discussed the lakefront master plan and it was reaffirmed that we would follow the lakefront master plan by the entire council.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Just so that I understand, looking at the map, does this plan propose more landfill? That's something I couldn't tell. Is there landfill here?
Yes.
Yes.
There is landfill.
Can you tell us how much landfill?
Well, I can tell you that the size of the footprint, that red footprint that's shown as the so-called site of development for arts and fine arts is about 900,000 square feet.
So that's, that's what it, okay.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste.
That meeting that Alderman Winn referred to, our discussion was that we would not close options that might be viable. So at this particular point in time, we're not saying that this is a viable option, but we didn't take an absolute position.
You, Mr. Smith, I think you're next.
Thank you. I want to address two topics. Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. First, going back to the waste discussion of APW committee, refuse by the pound is a progressive idea that disincentivizes consumption and it drives consumers to demand less packaging. So I think that's a good way to go for the city. A counterconsideration with regard to outsourcing is that a common stimulus program is a jobs program. And it stands to reason that if we're talking about possibly eliminating jobs, that amounts to potentially an anti-stimulus. So I would like to see how many of the jobs to be eliminated are our neighbors in Evanston, because that can have ripple effects if, in the interest of ostensibly cutting general revenue, we end up causing foreclosures and bankruptcies in our own neighborhood. Third, with regard to the question of yard waste, I don't even like the term. I prefer to think of it as sequestered carbon. In a tree city, there is some irony that we would charge the people who are, in essence, maintaining our urban forest. If we're going to put a sticker program out and distribute waste bins, I would suggest that we also distribute compost bins and encourage people in the strongest possible way to be turning that sequestered carbon into reusable soil. And one thing we might do is eliminate some of the requirements that people mow their lawns. It seems ironic to pass a law and force people to mow their lawns and then charge them for doing so. With regard to the lakefront proposals, I've been obviously a proponent for many years of more fine arts and performing arts in Evanston, in particular the lack of live music venues. And I think we should take note of the success of the space, space as it were, down in Chicago Avenue, which has really filled a void and a deficit in South Evanston. It's been wonderfully successful. That said, I am a little leery of landfill. I brought a lawsuit to stop a landfill a little further down the lake. There's a lot of problems ranging from environmental to invasion of the public trust doctrine with putting any type of material in the lake to create land. And any pier promontory jetty that you put out, there tends to interrupt the littoral, L-I-T-T-O-R-A-L, drift and cause further erosion further south of anything that you build. So we'd have to be extraordinarily careful on that. And I suspect that the sentiment of the neighborhood and the community would be against any type of marina. The overwhelming sentiment, which I share, was for a more natural, less commercial, and low-impact lakefront. That said, the lakefront does belong to everybody, so we have to figure out how to maximize this asset and this resource for the good of the entire community. My preference would be that we maximize it in a natural way. And keeping in mind that even though we're in tough economic times, you don't, in tough economic times, start getting rid of the necessities and what makes your home a home. Once we give away a public asset, it's almost impossible to get it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale and members of the council. I'm Donna Gerson. I live at 200 Lee Street, and I'm chair of the Friends of the South Branch, and I'd like to talk about the branch libraries. I'd like to point out that the South Branch is located in the densest, oh, okay. Okay. South Branch is located in the densest part of the city, and this service, which is one of the few city services that is located in our area, is a very, very important one. For those of you who have not visited the branch libraries, I urge you to do so. They're very different from the main library. They have a different atmosphere and they have a different clientele. It's a very intimate atmosphere. The staff, which, and we've been very fortunate always to have wonderful staff at South Branch, but they really nurture the users of the library. It's a very personal relationship, and it is, it's not the research library, but it is one that is very, very important to the neighborhood, very important to mothers of young children, very important to older people who walk to that library. The library also provides services to the students at Park School, to the students at Washington and Lincoln Schools as well. The community supports the libraries overall generously, as we know from our Fund for Excellence contributions. But also specifically at South Branch, we've received really marvelous gifts from an anonymous donor who gave us a subscription to the New York Times, so it would be available for our users. Also gave a computer that was valued at about $1,000. We have volunteers who help with the work. The branches, the two branches together account for approximately 17% of usage at the libraries. South Branch is over 90 years old. It is an institution that is very important to Evanston. It has been in that same general location for 90 years. South Branch created two outposts where we place books that have been donated to the library, excess books, and they're free and they're stamped as a gift from South Branch. And these are at the metro station and at the coffee, coffee, the something Brothers, the Brothers Coffee House at Main and Chicago. Let's see. At those places, we also post information about the library. Usage is up at all of the libraries, but it is up even more at the branch libraries. And especially at South Branch, where for September of 2009, our usage was 40% over the usage the previous September. I mean, we know libraries are being used more at this time of economic downturn, but in the branches, it has really, really been remarkable. I think the branch libraries embody values that are important to Evanston, to all of us. They value neighborhoods, they strengthen neighborhoods, they are walkable. We want to have a walkable city and people can walk to them. They value literacy and culture, and our history is embodied in those branches too. And I hope they will be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Mr. City Manager, could we have a budget presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You directed staff back in September to move forward with the community budget process, and that process has now come to a conclusion. We brought in a very able facilitator, Lynn, is it Monty or Montai? Montai, to come and facilitate this. Lynn has a lot of experience working with local governments, not necessarily so much on the North Shore, but really in other areas throughout the Chicagoland area. She did an excellent job of working with our community members on this process, and she's here this evening to make a presentation on the results. Lynn, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale and members of the city council. I knew I would not say that name correctly, but I hope that I don't mispronounce too many other things. I'm here to make a presentation on behalf of the participants in the community budget workshop process, which is concluding as of tonight. This process has been quite remarkable, I think, not very commonly done, especially in the form that this one took. And I would like to start out with some appreciation to the city council, first off, on behalf of the community and especially on the part, behalf of the participants in the process. You extended an invitation for participation, and it was really quite meaningful just in the act of doing that. It kind of offers a sense of partnership with the community. It provides a notion that there could be a collaborative creative role with community participants. And it actually generates a new awareness, kind of a breadth of understanding, which a lot of the feedback that we received in the written feedback forms offered and told us, and leadership development in the community. And many people said that they learned a great deal and they will take that with them into the future, and I think that will be of great benefit to the city. And finally, I think that the reason for appreciation and thanks is because as you extend such an invitation, you also facilitate or help facilitate an alignment between the policymaking of the community, the delivery of services in the community, and the values and priorities of residents. And so this whole process seems to have represented, and I think actually does embody, that kind of commitment. Additional acknowledgements on the part of, from the participants and also from me are to the administration, the city council, sorry, the city manager, the assistant city manager and staff for their administration of the process, the oversight, facilitation of all of the process, and their presence. The department directors and staff, all of them very responsive, quantifying ideas and suggestions, doing a lot of analysis for us, and also their presence at all of those meetings. And the logistics folks who worked with our facilities, the operational aspects, AV, website, and their presence, all the technical people, it's all very much appreciated by all of the participants. So, well, we started out, let me see here, we started out with a context that all cities are required by law to annually develop a balanced budget, and this city faces a projected $8 million deficit for the next fiscal year, as we know, which begins March 1st, and must develop and adopt a balanced budget. Okay, so that is the context. And, you know, I begin with this PowerPoint presentation always with the reprimand on the part of one of my teachers who said, "Be careful using PowerPoints because the power can be in the PowerPoint." Rather than where I think it needs to belong, which is in, again, the engagement of these community residents who both in person and also in online participation really did grapple with the same issues that this council grapples with, and I think they really did take that job very seriously in intention to partner with you. So the concept of this process was to engage and facilitate the public and staff and, for the purpose of generating these ideas, hopefully in an informed way, in order to meet that requirement of the balanced budget and also to maintain the integrity and quality of city services to the greatest degree possible. What were the desired outcomes of that process? Well, obviously, to generate the suggestions we're going to be presenting to you tonight, and think about delivery of services efficiently, effectively, economically, to surface ideas around these several categories, which you probably have seen in the data, about cost containment, possible changes in service delivery, the notions of efficiency, maybe new non-tax revenues, and also potential other general revenue ideas. And then, of course, to hear the opinions about municipal service priorities. After this was determined, the city engaged Lynn Montai Associates to facilitate the process. I want to, at this time, acknowledge my associate, Michelle Ryan, who facilitated workshop one. She is unable to be present this evening, but was a very important partner in the facilitation process. So we had several means of participation in this budget, community budget workshop process. Obviously, the workshops themselves, I'm going to be talking quite a lot about this evening, but there was also online participation. And the opportunities there, for those of you who visited the website, were very extensive. Participants online could review all of the orientation materials that were presented at the first workshop, including PowerPoints and other documents. They could read all the documents we generated in the process. They could offer questions. They could respond to question prompts that participants in the workshops actually responded to. They could view video recordings, and they could also, in the end, vote for their five most favored recommendations. There was also the cable television or the YouTube viewer, and we had many of those, I'm sure, with commercials and videos running as often as they did on the broadcast media. And so those were several means of participation for the community. We also had staff participation, and the staff participation was a very intensive process that took place in late October and early November, where department-level workshops were held. They were convened by employees by department, however facilitated by a different department director. And again, they generated suggestions for efficiency, cost containment, and other innovations. 22 pages worth of suggestions, all of which are in a document and posted on the website for anyone to be able to review. And that document was referred to very extensively by the workshop participants. So here are a few statistics on our participation, that the in-person participation was at four different venues, and I will go over those venues in a moment, but participation in workshop one at 81, workshop two, 28, with 12 observers, workshop three, 25 participants with 14 observers, and workshop four, our final workshop that just took place last week, last Monday, with 33 participants. Online, we had an astounding number of visits to the budget homepage, 8,771, and then you can see the breakdown by month. Given that this is only December 7th, that's a pretty high visit rate for December. And also in the polling at the end, which just has been operational for the last week and concluded at midnight last night, we had a total of 1,045, but are actually counting 1,003, as some of them were deemed to be invalid entries.
And Lynn, perhaps I can say how you get to invalid entries. We have a very smart web developer here on our staff, and she was able to tell multiple voters by their Internet protocol or IP address. So if people voted more than once, she took them out. That was something that the council, if you recall, when we first talked about this, wanted to make sure we made, that there was not multiple voting. And so Erica Strolli of our information technology division did an excellent job of that. So that's how we know the 42 people who tried to stuff the ballot box.
So the four workshops were held in different venues over a period of a month's time. Anyone could attend workshop one or any of the workshops, but participation as a participant in workshops two, whoops, I see, I misnumbered the workshops there. Obviously, there are supposed to be two, three, and four. Those three workshops could only be, you could only be a participant in those if you attended workshop one. So that became a prerequisite. And I'll explain to you why that decision was made. These were very interactive experiences, and they built upon each other. Workshop one was about orientation. We heard a presentation from the assistant city manager about city budget, got a kind of a 101 kind of an orientation, and then we heard from every department director with a PowerPoint presentation. And along with that experience, we had participants in small groups determine what their questions of understanding were, and posed those questions to the directors and to Marty, and were able to get some response from that experience. So 38 questions were generated in that first workshop, and all of that went into building the kind of credential for the participation. The second workshop was about setting context and developing a frame of reference for the participants. What I mean by that is that they examined more than what is it about city operations. They went into an engagement with each other and a conversation and dialogue about what's important to us about this city, what do we want to honor about our past, why is this city meaningful to me, and what are my values, priorities, and essential attributes I think in 2010, 2011 we need to remember when we're generating ideas and making our selections. The third workshop was about idea generation, and then the fourth was the discernment process and selection. So here these workshops are again in a little bit more detail, where at the orientation, we got the overview. We also had the opportunity for questions. In workshop two, the frame of reference, dialogue and sharing about the city's purpose, effectiveness, values, priorities, and essential attributes. Workshop three was about idea generation, where we interviewed department directors, and then with, in small group, and I was really surprised, I thought we might have a lot of individuals generating ideas all on their own, but most of the time, the participants decided they'd like to sit together, they wanted to talk together, and they had generated ideas as a group by and large. And then in the fourth workshop, more Q and A with the staff and some perusal of the memoranda that we're prepared on topics such as solid waste, recycling, and yard waste, as you were discussing earlier this evening, about- as you were discussing earlier this evening, about provision of fire service, free software, and there was a fourth one where we were actually perusing the memoranda and the quantification that the staff was able to develop for us, as a result of suggestions we had generated in Workshop Three. Again, the groups convened in dialogue circles, and during that process, determined what they should select as the universe of options for their voting process. In other words, there were many pages of ideas, some of them were too vague and not quantifiable, and folks knew better than to say, well, we're going to try to vote for some of these. Instead, they created a short list from which they would select. And then finally, they made the selection of their most favored recommendations for budget development, and each person could cast five votes and determine that only one vote be given per recommendation, so that we could hear the sentiment of the whole group rather than any single individual's strength and passion for one or the other option. Few observations and challenges in this process. You know, at times, it felt a little messy, and at times, it felt too structured, and when you get feedback that says both things, then you know you probably have done the best you can possibly do, that it's not going to be perfect by any means. But the participants certainly exhibited such a high-quality level of commitment and love of the community, and I want to commend and tell all of you that it is always a privilege to work with folks who willingly, in a volunteer way, come together and try to make their community a better place, simply out of the goodness of their hearts and out of a desire for, you know, the development of a sound and really well-run quality-of-life community. They were generous with their time, obviously. The processes themselves were a minimum of 13 and a half hours if you attended all of the workshops, very serious in their desire to be of guidance to you. It was challenging to create high-potential offerings and enough of them to close this budget gap, and many of the ideas, as I said, were very conceptual and not easily quantifiable in the timeframe we had. I think it's also very true that it's far easier to react to somebody else's ideas than it is to be in the seat of creativity and create your own, and to be able to stand up and say, this is what I stand for. And I think that people actually grappled with that because, you know, the government process often is one where, although input is invited, reaction is really more common. And so this was really, I think, a generative process rather than a reactive process, and therefore, I think it was a very healthy experience for the community. Now, I'm about to go into some charts that demonstrate workshop results and also polling results. These are going to be difficult to read and maybe impossible, but we will capture just the high-level ones in the few remaining slides that follow. So first, at workshop results, we had 33 people who participated in the fourth workshop, which was the one that, where people were able to cast their votes, and the highest number of votes for any single selection was 12. However, many of these were worded very similarly, and because time was of the essence, we did not remove the redundancies when we began the voting. So a little bit of cleanup had to follow, and you will note that, for example, in the first one, which talks about examining personnel costs, hours, and people, it's very similar to one a little bit further down the list that relates to examining the, and I can't read that actually from here, what does that say? Examine personnel costs, and then the other one was, one was reduce operations of the Civic Center to a four-day week, and, okay, cut management is another one, and so there were several of them that relate to personnel matters. Again, in the next couple of slides, you will see these in greater size, so they will be able to be read. For online polling results, likewise, although we had 1,003 votes cast, the one that garnered the most votes actually was to close the township office and move it to the Civic Center at 650 votes, selling water to more communities at 412, consolidating social service agencies at 390. And then we get to a number of these examining personnel costs, which, by the time all of those are totaled, they actually result in the highest level of votes cast. So let's take a look now at these in a more readable form. This is a comparison of the workshop and the online results. The purple color is the result of the workshop as a percentage of total votes per category. Personnel matters, reductions and cuts in personnel actually rank the highest of all of the recommendations in both the workshop and the online poll. The next area, and I use the workshop priorities as the guide for this particular slide, and the next slide, you will see the poll as the priority. In this case, the solid waste, recycling, and yard waste issues was ranked second, the township moving to the Civic Center third, selling more water fourth, closing branch libraries, and we did collapse these, so I know that one of the choices was to close one branch library and the other was to close both. But this process did not allow us to differentiate at that final level. That will obviously be worked out in your budget process, should that be a choice that you decide to make. Selling parking garage, garages, or using parking passes was next, and closing the one of the fire stations was the next. There were several more that fell off in numbers. I thought I would give you just the highest-level ranked ones. Again, this one is from the workshop. In the polling results, I don't have this on a chart for you, but this was the descending order of results from the poll. Again, to cut personnel-related costs, move the township offices to Civic Center, the collection of solid waste issues, selling water to more communities, consolidating social services, and increasing employee benefits contributions. On all of these, you know, the universe of ideas was fixed, and these all ranked fairly high on both lists, and you will be able to weed through and sort through this data at your leisure in the budget process, I'm sure. These are the workshop results from the two sources. So in conclusion, the feedback that we received from the budget, community budget process, was very, I think it was very complimentary, and it was very much appreciated. As I mentioned, it did seem to increase awareness of the importance of the city, its services, and also the understanding of what it costs to deliver service, to fulfill all the operations commitments that you have, and to take care of the capital needs that you have. So I think that that was, you know, a side benefit that probably was not even anticipated originally, that the community definitely is a willing partner. They love to be invited, and I encourage you to do that more. And on their behalf, thank you for the opportunity, for the community to be of service to itself, and I also thank you for the opportunity to be of service. It's really been a pleasure to work with the city, and I'm here to answer any questions that I can answer, if you should have any.
Thank you very much, Ms. Monti, for taking us through the process. Thank you, Mr. Bob Kowitz, for putting us in this place. I think the feedback, both from the workshops, from the online polling, and I hope from the community budget workshops in January and February, will be as helpful as this information is. My question for you, and I want to thank all the participants, from the 88 people who came to the first workshop, to every single person who kept showing up for those 13 and a half hours of discussion and feedback on our budget process. It's just great information to have. I have a specific question, and that is, did you ask for feedback after every workshop, after every one, or was it at the end of the whole process?
We had written feedback forms for Workshops Two and Four. We had a poster on a back wall for Workshop Three, and Workshop One, since I was not present for that workshop, and I'm having trouble recalling whether we used a feedback form for that one or not. We did? Okay. So yes, and it would be our practice to do so, if possible, after every one.
I'd be interested in reading some of the feedback that you got, the more specific comments on the process. Thank you very much.
Sure, happy to share that.
Did you have that indicated the community would be safe if we closed a fire station?
I don't have any documentation about the fire station closures that relates to safety. This is, there was a memorandum prepared, and it was used by the participants. I was not, of course, seated at their tables and unable to know what went into their thinking and discernment process. I heard their report outs. So that is all the information that I have. There may be others who can answer that question, however.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As Ms. Monti mentioned, we did provide some feedback to questions, and there was a question regarding reduction in fire department service, and that information is in the packet of information that was a summary of the document. So I believe you have that. It's also available on our website.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. With the conclusion of these community budget workshops, I'd like to walk the council through the proposed schedule for your review and deliberations of the budget for 2010, 2011. Under the municipal code of the City of Evanston, I am required to submit a budget to the city council no later than December 31st. Because of, unfortunately, what I believe will be a significant number of layoffs that will need to be proposed in this budget, I will be making a communication available to you and to the staff on Friday, December 18th, outlining a broad overview of what will be contained in the proposed budget. We will then take the remaining two weeks to prepare the usual larger budget document for the council's review, and that will be the document that will be available to you no later than December 31. We passed out for you this evening the draft budget calendar, which you looked at several months ago, and I would like to walk through it just to confirm with the council that that remains a sequence that is good for you. The first workshop is proposed to be on January 23rd, 2010. Those have been Saturday workshops. My understanding is that those have traveled occasionally. My recommendation to the council would be to have that workshop here. From a televising perspective, logistics perspective, this room is probably the best room for that. Then on February 1, which is a Monday evening, I believe, Mr. Lyons, we've done 8:30. So that would begin at 8:30 here in the council chambers. Then a public hearing on the budget, a special council meeting then to be scheduled on Monday, February 1st. If the council required a optional budget workshop or budget hearing on February 3, and then we would ask that the first opportunity then for adoption of a budget would be at your first regular meeting in the month of February, which is February 8. Then your second meeting in the month of February would be February 22. Certainly, if you wish to have additional meetings called during this, certainly that would be, you know, a usual thing to happen with city councils, if you needed more time with the eye that we would then be done before the end of February, and then would enter those changes into the final budget and have a document to you thereafter. The only option I would offer up to the council is that first meeting in January, looking at a calendar for the month of January. The first Saturday is the 2nd of January. Many people will likely be concluding their holidays, coming back from a victorious bowl game in Tampa, Florida, or other such things. So there would also be the 9th of January, which is also a Saturday. The 16th of January is the Martin Luther King Holiday Weekend. The 23rd, my understanding from Mr. Lyons, has been sort of a traditional time to give the council approximately a month to review the budget. My understanding is that last year, the council alternated from that and took an earlier hearing, which might be the 9th of January in 2010, if you chose to do that. I offer that as just an option for you. Clearly, under statute of the Evanston Municipal Code, we need to have this done by February 28, but I would mention that to you. Otherwise, certainly, your staff is very comfortable with the draft calendar beforehand.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
City Manager and colleagues, I think waiting till January 23rd is way too late to start discussing the budget, and I would really prefer that we begin either on, and I know we probably have a human services meeting on the 4th, but I think the 2nd should be a workshop and maybe a short meeting on the 4th, or the 5th, or the 6th. I just think waiting till the 23rd, this is not going to be routine, so. And we have many new members of the council who have never deliberated on a budget, and while they're smarter than anybody, it still is, it's a learning experience, and I'm still trying. So I would say, having been on this council for many years, the 23rd is way too late to begin the budget, and that's just my suggestion.
Thank you. Alderman Wen.
Alderman Rainey, I think that the 2nd would probably be problematic for a number of members of the council, as well as the public, and I think if we are looking for another date, we should possibly look at the 9th, Saturday, the 9th. Saturdays really give us a long enough period of time, and I think, for, you know, several hours all at once, and it allows the public to come and stay through the entire discussion if they choose to. But I'm open to other suggestions.
I think that's...
All right, well, we have Alderman John Baptiste.
So the 9th would be the first presentation of the budget, right?
That is up to the council. I would agree with Alderman.
You proposing the first presentation to be the 23rd, right? This is what you proposing.
That has been, my understanding, a traditional calendar. I understand that last year, the council chose to do an earlier workshop, and I think looking at the calendar, we would suggest the first Saturday in January to do this would be the 9th, because I think we would also have staff away already on the 2nd. So if the council wished to do the 9th, we could schedule the 9th. We could leave the 23rd on hold if the council felt it was needed, if perhaps people could keep that date blocked on their calendar, at least through the 9th, and then we can keep the rest of the calendar as is, and certainly, if the council feels additional meetings are necessary, you have a practice of scheduling additional meetings, and certainly, this isn't...
See, we can schedule them, and then if we don't need them, we can cancel them.
Again, Alderman Rainey, my only concern on the 16th is the city is closed on the 18th, and I've not done a poll of folks either on the council. We will be here at whatever date you ask us to be here.
But I think the early presentation...
I guess it's priority.
I think the first budget presentation, I agree, that it should be the 9th, and then let's convene again on the 23rd to begin, you know, fuller deliberation. let's convene again on the 23rd to begin, you know, fuller deliberation, and leave open the Saturdays in February.
Well, I put the 9th on my iPhone, and I don't know how to take anything off the iPhone calendar.
So, Madam Mayor, we'll be prepared then. We will provide general information to the staff and the community a week from this Friday on the 18th of December. The formal document will be out on the 31st. We'll be prepared for the first budget workshop presentation on the 9th. We'll have the 23rd available, and then we'll follow the calendar, and if additional dates need to be scheduled, we will be prepared to make presentations as appropriate.
There's a Saturday on the 30th, too, of January. That's a Saturday.
If the council, so if we need it.
All right. Will everyone reserve the 30th in case we need it? Seeing no further lights, City Manager, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Second. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
This said, "We reserve the 30th." The 30th of January. But, but, but.
Alderman Wilson?
Yeah, aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Needing is adjourned.
Folks, I put up a calendar.
I know. My calendar is going to be too far away.
Why, why doesn't it say anything about the budget?